Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes, from the city manager number four.
Number four is a recommendation that the bid of ag, chem, and the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars for the purchase of land application equipment for the wastewater treatment plant be accepted.
Motion?
Mayor Muller.
Mayor Proton Fisher.
Move for the adoption from the city manager number four.
Second?
Departed.
Supported by councilmember McCullough. Discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor Muller.
Councilperson Stevens.
I noticed that we are purchasing a used gator instead of the new one, obviously prices involved here. Usable life, though, were also going to be decreasing and it appears that our particular one did not last the entire fifteen years that we've already discussed. Is buying a used one gonna mean that we're gonna be right back here in about five years to buy another one?
Mayor Muller and councilmembers, we have had our mechanics take oil samples and fuel samples from the unit we're thinking of purchasing. They have thoroughly inspected the unit. The unit in question was used for about a year, year and a half, and has been sitting since then. It's been operate- it's been idling, you know, they started every once in a while and make certain it's good operating condition, but it has relatively few hours on it. And the interesting thing is, the reason this particular unit is being sold is that the individual who purchased it no longer uses the same process that they used. I kinda hate to tell you what it is, but he had, uh, I won't get into that. But anyway, the process, this individual was a manufacturer, he wasn't a farmer, and he produced a product. And a byproduct of that product he produced, he, um, he would rid it by applying it to land. We actually found a cheaper way to rid himself of that material, and that was done a couple of three years ago. And since then, he hasn't used the unit, and he's been, he's had it out on the market and didn't have any takers. We were fortunate enough to be one of the people, it just, we happened to be looking, uh, we had it for open bid, and found about, learned about this used unit, inspected it thoroughly, and we find, uh, that the unit has all the capabilities we could ever want at a very reasonable price. Uh, and that's why we're recommending it tonight.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Uh, this unit saved us almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars, doesn't it? We had a budget for about three hundred sixty for the new gator.
We had budgeted three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this unit. And, um, those are rev- the funds we are utilizing are, uh, revenues that we've accumulated by, uh, by them paying rental rates to the motor vehicle fleet. So that does, uh, provide funds for the motor vehicle fleet, or funds we won't have to use that we had anticipated on using, which will go to buy another piece of equipment.
Yeah, I know the former street superintendent kept telling me this is one piece of equipment we needed to buy. It was the first piece of equipment he had purchased when he became street superintendent, so he'd been getting on me about getting a new one of these soon, I'll lend a fail.
There is a question that councilmember Stevens asked that I think is important, and I apologize, but I missed it earlier, that we intend to not only acquire this unit, but we intend to keep our old unit around for about another three or four years, maybe five years. And the intention of that is, um, we need this thing so urgently during the land applying season that our mechanics have a hard time getting it out of service to work on it. So by having one that's available, that we know is well-maintained, we can put it back into service for short, just short periods of time, while if we have to take this one out of service to do any work on it. But this will be the workhorse for the system. It's much more efficient than the current one we're using.
What's the year on the current one?
I apologize?
What's the year on the current one?
Um, I believe it is thirteen years old. So that would be in nineteen, let's see, uh, two thousand eight?
Ninety-five.
Yeah. Ninety-five.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Byrne.
Uh, on your cost summary here?
Yes, sir.
You have the projected with new equipment down to point two-nine-eight cents a gallon. Is that overall, or just with this gator, or?
The, the reason for the, um, reduction in costs by our operations is this unit has a spreader bar that's twice as wide as our current unit, and it holds almost twice as many gallons of material at any given time. It also has a GPS unit on it that can find the end of the row for the operator where they stopped and pick right up where it left off, and, and, and you program in the application rate, and the machine moves down the field, all the operator's gotta do is steer and follow a line. These efficiencies that we're gonna realize will, will no question lower our costs, and these are, we believe, are conservative estimates and reduce costs for our operation because of the efficiencies of the new unit.
I think you answered my question, but just to make sure, you're saying the overall cost is gonna go down from thirty-five, point three-five cents down to point two-nine cent, not just the one gator, but the overall cost?
Yes, sir. All, our, our costs for land applying completely, yes.
Okay, which, uh, it's basically a four-year payback then, so?
Yes, that's a, that's a good way of looking at it, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing non-seating, now the clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number one?
Resolution number one authorizes payments one through nineteen.
Motion?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember McCullough?
Move for the adoption of resolution number one.
Second?
So moved.
So moved by councilmember Stevens. Discussion, comments, concerns, questions?
Uh, Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Byrne.
Uh, on the list, I didn't see any subsidy for McMorn. Does that normally come up on the bill payments? I haven't noticed that in the past either. I'm just curious where we see that. Seeing how it's quarterly on?
McMorn.
Uh, Mayor Muller, members of council, um, the payments that you have before you on a monthly basis are the payments on the construction contracts, the DPW-type contracts. The, uh, the McMorn quarterly payment was approved in the budget and is made at the, the first date of each quarter during the fiscal year.
Okay, so that's automatic going forward, no action required, correct?
As long as things stay the same, yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing non-seating, now the clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number two? Does Amanda do this? Substitute, okay, resolution number two.
Pointing a nine-member transition team to review the Henry McMorn Memorial Auditorium Authority Articles of Incorporation and make recommendations to council on the future management and governing of McMorn as requested by councilmember Stevens.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Stevens, second?
Support.
Supported by councilmember Dorn. Comments, questions, concerns?
Uh, Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Byrne.
Uh, if I understand correctly with all this, uh, the authority is set to expire in December, and what we're trying to do here is organize under what terms it'll be run after that?
I, first, let me correct something, then I'll let councilmember Stevens address it. Um, it's, it's been advised to a ten-member board now. Um, I did contact councilmember Stevens, and, uh, councilmember Lewandowski was the one that started this McMorn thing, and I suggested she add in Alan's acceptance, so it'll be, uh, councilmember, uh, Lewandowski is the addition, so it'll be a ten-member board. Uh, to the rest of your question, councilmember Stevens, I'll let you address that.
Certainly. On December thirty-first, the Articles of Incorporation of this organization cease to exist. What would happen is that it would cease to exist, therefore, all of, anything that they are doing as far as business, any contracts that they have, any of those types of legalities, we would have to look at. Somehow, we would have to be able to do that. So, what, rather than waiting until the moment in time in which we would do that particular chore, it seems advisable that we have a transition team, that we come back and say the Articles of Incorporation are either something that we should keep, or amend, or completely discard, and look at a different way of approaching it. The people that have, uh, offered to serve on the board are experts, and they are experts in plant management and facilities management, they are experts in human resources, and they have proven themselves in a variety of places within the community. So these people have offered to work with us for the Articles of Incorporation, and looking at how we handle that particular issue. From there, it goes forward to we are going to have to have some way to manage the staff, manage whoever is there, and however the articles are then rewritten during the next few months. That's all this is to do, it is not any intention to do anything further than that or in the future, but to give us the time to look at this particular legal document and make sure that it is moving forward correctly.
Um, might add that we are, as councilmember Stevens, there's no, there's a tight time, timeline, and we expect the move on this before, um, the last, our last meeting in December, we would be, have been taking action on this. Any, any other questions, councilmember Lewandowski?
I guess, uh, councilmember Stevens, uh, answered one of my concerns was that are they gonna be writing the, the authority rules on what they're gonna be governing? She kinda said they won't, they're just gonna have to see if they need to be amended. The other concern I have is that we have nobody besides Mr. Fernandez on the, on the, the board here. I think the city manager and possibly the finance director should be on this. Um, they're the ones have a large stake in this too, I think, and, you know, finance director understands the budget of McMorn. I think we need somebody with that. Um, other than that, I guess I was a little concerned earlier about that they were gonna go here and try to make a new McMorn authority, and I say, my argument was gonna be, well, how do you make an authority for something that doesn't exist yet? We don't know where we're going, we don't know if we're going private, public, or if we're gonna sell it, we don't know where we're going. So I, I guess I, a little more assured, or assured of what we have in front of us now. I would like to see either, you know, the city manager and, and our finance director added to this list too.
I, I'll, I'll answer, address that. Um, the city manager, uh, would be ex-official and would have all the resources of the city administration as he deems necessary to use them for your assistance, so I don't think that they need to be formally put on here, they, they serve at your, at our discretion and directions, so, and his, yeah.
I think there are other city people that will be intimately involved in this as they go, and as they're needed. Uh, we would be pulled in, and, uh, so I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, I, you know, and if, that's, that's fine too, I guess, I just, I would like to see at least, you know, somebody who's gonna represent the city's financial interest on there, and then two, who knows what we have and where the money's at, and what McMorn's spending, and I think, to me, if I'm gonna support, I'd have to have that on there, I think.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Stevens?
I did discuss this with Bruce. It has always been my experience that when we're working with an organization, and we are the board, the, all of the members of the staff are at our disposal, and I did ask specifically about John Ogden being at our disposal to go through that, and was assured that we would have all of that coming from the city, rather than their being members. They support us in our endeavors and will support us in our endeavors, so, so that's why the names don't appear. The reason that Randy Fernandez, although he is an employee of the city, is because he represents the Downtown Development Authority, and they, um, have some issues and some concerns and needs that they need to have heard about how McMorn moves forward too. So that, that was the reasoning behind that person.
And I, I would have to, you know, um, I, I agree, the city administration is always at our disposal, and, uh, nothing against you, Mr. Crayback, but I had two objections to this, one is, uh, Mr. Lewandowski, and the other was that I didn't think you should be, I thought you should be ex-official also. But a compromise was to councilmember Stevens and, uh, putting him on there, I'll settle with that, so. But I think the less that we have administrators on there, and as, we use them as, um, our arm to do our work in it, I think that's their appropriate role, as an employee member, so.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Stevens?
As I came in this evening, um, Mr. Crayback met me in the hallway and said that the, he now has the names of the three members that would be serving from the authority, and that will be Juanita Geddings, John Hill, and Jim Bridge.
Okay. I, how did the motion read? Was it a motion for nine members, or?
I said nine when I read it.
We, I, we probably have to, um, amend the motion to accept, put councilmember Lewandowski on there.
The resolution as written says ten.
Oh, it does say ten?
Yeah, same.
Alright, fine.
I just read it.
The clerk just read it wrong then, okay, that's fine. Any further discussion, comments, questions?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I guess as I look over this list, though, we don't have one financial person on here really, other than, you know, uh,
We have two.
Uh, Blue Water Plastics, I mean, I, I would prefer to have somebody who has a, in public administration and finance. I guess that's just my only concern, is that we have somebody that's there for that.
And I, again, I think we have that with the city, uh, and city manager on there and the staff of the city administration, so, but that's just my opinion. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Mayor Proton Fisher?
Lonnie, on, I assume that this team, at this point, there's no direct or specific direction you're going in. It's going to be to look at multiple options and things to provide a recommendation back to city councilor before our last meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely, and what we are going to look at is article by article of the incorporation papers. The incorporation papers are not that long, but they are written in a very antiquated language. It actually says that we will pay a lease to McMorn, we will pay a lease. No lease document exists. There are things like that, it's, first, we're gonna look at the incorporation papers, but we have to look at the legalities. The very first article says that McMorn is an authority all unto itself to be sued or sued. We have to look at what that means about liabilities for the city. If this just expires, do we hold all those liabilities, is, are the liabilities in fact separate? It's that kind of a thing, a legal document that we're gonna look through every one of the articles. Then we'll come back with what a legal document in today's version ought to read according to the people involved on the team, that they'll come up with a recommendation, but they'll look at all options, including a recommendation that might be, we're okay legally, and it can be totally dissolved if you'd like. But first, we need to find all those things out.
I, one thing I just wanna point out there, um, you're gonna report back, if this is adopted, you report back to the city council by November fifteenth. Our first meeting is November tenth. And seeing how November fifteenth is a national holiday.
November the tenth then would be the meeting.
For some of us, that's a national holiday, and everything stops. Uh, you would have to have a special meeting the fourteenth or before, if you wanted this person there.
Mayor Muller, I'm absolutely certain that this will be done in the time fashion, that we'll have everything in and, and look at and find out our liabilities and our issues much in advance.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember McCullough.
Uh, this, this is probably a more of a question for councilmember Stevens, but, uh, I know that we, excuse me.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's alright.
I'm sorry. Um, Larry Crayback is waving at me, and apparently when we exchanged names in the hallway, there are two Jims on his board, and it is Jim Courier, his president, that will be there, not, not Jim Bridge. Okay. We have the right name.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, my question would be concerning the, the three members at large that, uh, that we have just, that's in this motion. I know that you sent an email to us personally about these names, but kind of for the public's sake, and maybe for my, oh, my, my own processing of this, could you just kinda reiterate why these three people were chosen, and how they came about, uh, what their expertise were?
Sure, sure. Um, Randy Fernandez, I already spoke about, about the Downtown Development Authority, and he is currently the executive director, so he brings information from the Downtown Development Authority. Daniel Lackwood is the retired CFO, Chief Financial Officer of Blue Water Plastics, which is an international, or was an international corporation. Um, Dan retired quite a time ago, uh, when Blue Water was still a very viable business in our community, and he also is from St. Clair. Uh, the other member at large, Donald Stoner, is retired human resources director of St. John's Health System, not the hospital, the system, and he is currently a consultant that works in HR and, uh, has various contracts all over the state dealing with nonprofits and human resources. Another member at large is Mark Facette, the general manager of Domtar, and his previous experience is as a plant facilities manager, and he is the general manager, local CEO of Domtar, our second-largest tax-paying industry, and he lives in Fort Huron.
And I, I guess I have somewhat of a follow-up question, because I, I got confused then. Uh, councilmember Lewandowski was asking about, uh, the involvement of city manager, city finance staff. Uh, they're not gonna be serving on the board, but will they be, they're gonna be at service for them? Or will they be attending the meetings, or how does that, how does that look?
Who will be attending?
Well, the city manager, we, councilmember Lewandowski had asked whether or not we could put, uh, the city finance director or someone else on the board, and it was, uh, mentioned that they would be at their service, but will they be attending that, those board meetings to give their input? I know that they won't have a vote, apparently according to the structure, but will they be at the meetings? Or how, or will they be asked the questions afterwards, or how, how is that process gonna work?
Our meetings are going to take place on a weekly basis. It is, there will be a structured agenda, and there will be times when perhaps the finances are gonna be discussed, and we would expect that, I would call Bruce and say, I need Mr. Ogden to be there for that particular meeting, or whomever it is. In addition, we have, I have requests that, uh, if we're going to do this, that we have someone to record minutes, so that there will be minutes immediately made from each and every one of these meetings, which are open. You know, I would, they're going to be open meetings. Um, anyone that we would need, I think, would be at the other end of a phone if we needed them, if it came up in the agenda. Again, um, we did talk, Bruce and I talked about Gary Fletcher, and the same thing would be true of that. And Gary may be the one that we have to have at a few of the meetings, since we're talking about a very legal document.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn?
It would, it would seem that this is a very good idea in the fact that our option would be to let it expire with blinders on, and we don't know what the result of that would be, or to extend it again, which would just bring us back to the same point we are tonight. So it would seem that moving ahead and getting this team going to work and getting back a recommendation to us is a very good idea.
I, I would concur with that. I, uh, asked, uh, councilmember Stevens to come back with the resolution, she wanted to run with it. I did ask her to keep councilmember Lewandowski on it, um, because he had started it, and I, we're dealing with a document that's fifty-some years old, and I think it needs to be updated, and, you know, before we just extend the problem for another year like we did la- last time, right after the election, so. I think this is a positive step, and that we need to proceed with it. I agree with you, councilmember Dorn.
Uh, Mayor Muller?
I can assure you that, uh, I have a high personal level of interest in this, uh, activity, and if, if it's open and I can attend, I'll be there. And, uh, we'll pull in staff people as we need to, as you need them, rather than having them attending meetings for the sake of me, attending a meeting. Uh, I'd rather have it be pointed.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
I guess I have one last comment, is my concern is with, uh, much we've been using Gary Fletcher, I should have nothing against him. He's, uh, he's a lawyer, but can we not use our own staff lawyer that we're already paying? You know, Mr. Fletcher doesn't work very cheaply.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Stevens?
The only reason I said Gary Fletcher is he went over these and has done the last two, uh, letters that we have, legal letters on interpretation, and that was the only reason. Uh, you know, I don't care, we can use John Levisay, but I think we're gonna have to find out what those letters of interpretation meant.
Uh, yeah, I understand that, I was discussing, you know, for the little things that we're going through all day when the final product comes, I don't have a problem sending Mr. Fletcher, but, you know, I'd like to save someone, and I, I know he's gonna cheat the half of the hour.
He's not, and it, my feelings exactly, and we'll see what we can do with that.
Mayor Muller? Uh, Mayor Proton Fisher?
I have, I think, one last comment. Um, I've received some communications from some citizens who are very interested in, in McMorn and its, and its future. Plus, I have a, all the, um, comments here made from the community roundtables that we had. And the underlying theme through all of this is to privatize McMorn. Or, as I said in the last meeting that we had, to, in essence, get some, a profit motive into there, like a salesperson type at the very least, or to privatize it. This task force does not in any way stop that possibility, am I correct?
In fact, councilman Fisher, um, what this task force has the ability to do is take out the article that says that we cannot do that, and instead insert an article that would give more latitude toward being able to do certain things by the city council. That's the object of this, is to give several options and recommendations, and absolutely, that's in there. And, um, believe me, my only hope in everything is to save taxpayer dollars, because I am a taxpayer too.
Thank you.
Mayor Muller? Councilmember McCullough?
Well, I have, I guess I have two questions. My one question is, is probably, it's just a quick, more, more of a comment, and you kinda brought it up, Mayor Muller, when you had, talked about the general manager and the three authority members on the, that are gonna be serving on this board, the transition board, and my only comment to that effect is that I can see how you'd like the general manager to be removed, because it does seem kind of, to me, it seems a little lopsided to have four members from the former authority, and then two members from the city council, then. It just seems like there's a full concentrated group of people that have a certain, not agenda, but certain mindset, I guess, about McMorn. It seems a little lopsided to me to have four out of the, out of the ten people serving to be on from them. But my, my question would be, uh, I guess to avoid what we got into with the, uh, DMG contract, just for my own mind's sake, is McMorn Authority, will they also have to approve if, if the Articles of Incorporations is believed to be the best, to change and be the best method? Will they also have to approve those Articles of Incorporation, or are we the sole source of, uh, the Articles of Incorporation, where the, and, be all, say all, and all? Do we know?
Mayor Muller?
I think, um, that would be a question for the legal council to determine, but I think in the end result is that it would be a city council decision, okay? And I think that's something that the task force is gonna have to look into and make a decision, but I think the legal council would have to ask that, but I, I think the ultimate goal is, is that the city council, or the authority, only one would, but I certainly would support it be us, okay?
I just, I just see where they're gonna be getting to.
Mayor Muller, I did some checking on this.
Okay.
It expires on December the thirty-first, that's when it expires. We will bring you the transition report. You will pass, however this goes, and it will become effective January the first. At which point in time you have all the power? Because if you let it lapse, you have all the power on January the first, so if you say something else is going to be voted on by this council, effective January the first, that's the day you have it.
Okay.
January the first, it will be effective.
Yeah, if we take no action, January first, it's ours.
And so the action that you take from the recommendations that will, this group will bring you becomes by your vote effective, as we were talking about that November meeting. You will make a vote then. Does the McMorn Authority have to, uh, engage in a vote on this? No, because they will no longer exist on January the first. The concept of having them at the table is that they have valuable history and issues that I'm sure they would like to bring up too. But no, they do not have a vote prior to January the first, it becomes ours.
Task one more, I guess procedural question. When we do get the recommendation on the tenth, are we expecting a vote on that night? Are we gonna just hear the presentation and then give a few weeks for the public to have input? Had a couple people asked me that somewhat, not this exact question, but they're curious of how much input they're gonna have on the, the, uh, the Articles if they're revised, and if- is that kind of what we're looking at, a presentation, and then two weeks later at our final meeting, not final meeting, maybe November, or the first meeting in December? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
Absolutely, and that timeline, when Bruce helped me to set out the timeline, and that timeline was done for that reason, so that there is plenty of time, there's no rush, and everyone will be absolutely certain that when we vote on something, that vote is what will happen. So yes, there's plenty of time, we built time in.
I, I think one of the advantages, and I just want to check my background here, I just want, one of the advantages that we have going into this is that Bruce has experience in this type of contracts of these type of facilities, both in Indianapolis, Grand Rapids, and Kalamazoo, where he served as City Manager, so I believe we have a real asset sitting here with us, because he's worked on these type of civic center contracts and that in the past, and, correct? So he has, obviously is interested in this part. Some of the other problems that we passed on to him, he doesn't like, but this one here, he's really interested in, so. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Byrne.
Just to make sure I heard everything correctly, if we were to try to do something prior to the authority expiring, they would also have to vote on whatever we did?
I don't believe they would on the Articles, and that would maybe have to take a legal act, legal opinion, but I don't believe so because we, we control the, Councilmember Stevens.
Do you mean about the Articles?
Right.
Right now, until December the thirty-first, they have control of McMorn, as they always have had, but no, they don't have to vote on anything that has to do with control from January one on.
But to do anything sooner, they would also be voting.
Yes, we are under the same Articles of Incorporation until December the thirty-first, by virtue of the fact that the previous council extended them until December the thirty-first.
Um, other than if I'm right, John, we could dissolve them, right? Wasn't that part of the deal? By extending it a year?
Mayor and council, so far as the content of the Articles of Incorporation, council is in charge of that. Council can amend the Articles, you could vote to dissolve the, the Corporation, or it would end, at the end of December. The, the authority does not, you do not have to have the authority's approval to change the Articles of Incorporation. That is, that you are in control of that, and you alone.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Byrne.
The cost to the city, I assume all these people will be volunteers, with the exception of the people being paid as city employees that get pulled into the meetings getting their regular checks, or the City Council members probably get their meeting twenty dollars?
No.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Stevens.
I would assume that all members of this committee are volunteers.
Yeah, all councilmen, all the members would be volunteers, and the council members would not get paid either.
Okay, so it's not another forty thousand dollar study or?
No.
No. Good question, thank you for bringing it up. There would be no cost to it, these would strictly be volunteers. I don't like bringing a company in from Colorado to tell us how to do something.
I'd just like to say I'm all for privatizing and moving in the right direction to get this off the taxpayers' backs. There's no reason it can't be ran by somebody else with a profit motive and possibly actually bring more activity to town and make a little money there, whether it's KMG or whoever. I'd like, definitely like to see that continue moving forward. I don't see where this slows down that process at all. In fact, it might actually help keep things moving forward, so thank you for doing all the work on it.
Any further comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'm just looking at the resolution here, we will be voting on this before December thirty-first, and because it says adopting revisions to the Articles of Incorporations by December fifteenth.
That's correct.
To be affected January.
So it could be voted back down, yes?
No, because they will be affected January one.
All right, all right.
You're going to vote to be affected January one.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
And this will be for the, for ten members to be appointed.
Yep.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne? Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number eight.
Number eight would approve the agreement with Waschnau Engineering Company for professional engineering services to evaluate the city's curb ramps.
Resolution, or, I'm sorry, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Support by Mayor Paul Tim Fisher. Moved by Councilmember Lewandowski. Discussion, comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
No.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number nine.
Number nine would suspend all parking meter enforcement immediately and through November tenth, two thousand nine, or until further direction is given by the City Council.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Byrne, seconded by Councilmember Dorn. Discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember McCullough.
One of my main concerns, and I'm all for looking towards possibly doing this in the future, but it's not, is having no basic idea of what the cost might be and how they're going to be covered in the, in the near future, in the years to come. Obviously, we're strapped for money right now, and it'd be kind of tough to start looking for places to maintain the lots, and I think that's one of my, my main concerns with suspending them through two thousand nine, without having a concrete way of where the money's going to be coming from and how we're going to fill the budget gap that will arise from no revenue.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Dorn.
You know, obviously, this is something that's been going on, and we've talked about it, and talked about it over the years in the downtown area, but just a couple of quick issues. The DDA today, in the, in the Blue Water Area Chamber of Commerce, we're meeting with a new store owner that's coming into the downtown area, possibly wants to put a new, another second store, dollar store in downtown Fort Huron, and these are definite, very, very positive and good things happening in the downtown area. Their biggest fear is, you know, their customers getting tickets, and it may sound like a simple little thing, but it's annoying to have your customer come in, run into your store to get something, and, you know, stay in an extra ten or fifteen minutes and find a ticket on their window. The second thing is, I had a meeting with some area business folks down at one of the restaurants down off Quay Street, and we all went in, we all fed our meter, and the meeting went about fifteen minutes over, and one of the poor fellows didn't, you know, thought we'd get out on time, which was his mistake, of course, but he walks out and gets a ticket on it. But at some point, you know, from business perspective, we, we just, I, I don't, I know the money, I know the money matters, and I know all those things matter, and I know we've got problems with people that, that work in those facilities, not parking far enough away from their stores and all those, but all those seem to be worked out. But the biggest thing is, is if we're going to become friendly to people coming into our downtown restaurants, bars, stores, and all that kind of stuff, sticking a five-dollar ticket on their window is, is no welcome, Matt, as far as I'm personally concerned.
I would just like to, I would like to say a couple things to answer Councilmember McCullough's questions. Back on January eighth, the city manager gave us, January twenty-eighth, the city manager gave us a study of the cost effects of the city, of the parking enforcement. At that time, I raised the question about tickets that the average police officer writes out there and how that's tracked down, so back on February twenty-fifth, the city manager came back with a second report, and I'll read the last paragraph. "It appears that the parking enforcement costs generally exceed the related parking ticket revenues, though it is not possible to provide an accurate estimate. If revenues are allocated to ticket counts over the past five years, the enforcement costs may exceed revenues by an average of seven thousand per do, per doll, seven thousand dollars per year. That amount could be as high as twenty thousand dollars per year, if the difference in the parking fine amounts is considered." So what we're doing with the parking enforcement officer and the gentleman that collects the fees on that, we're losing somewhere between seventy, seven and twenty thousand dollars a year. When this council did away with the parking enforcement officer and brought back the animal control officer, the city administration, who in their prerogative has that right, went and put cadets in that, and other city personnel writing tickets, and now we see ourselves faced with a grievance by the union on the police department that we have non-union people doing union work. In my opinion, as a former union president, this is a sure winner for the union, so we'll be bringing back the parking enforcement officer, that's going to cost us seven thousand to twenty thousand dollars, and just aggravate people to come downtown and pay the parking. With that said, because the study has not been, it's my understanding, the study has not been given to Councilmember Stevens or to Councilmember Dorn, I would entertain a motion to postpone this till the next meeting so that they can look at this, but with that, the city manager has the op, has the authority to postpone all parking enforcement for the next two weeks at his discretion, without our approval of this, he can just stop that enforcement for two weeks. This will give an opportunity for Councilmember Stevens and Dorn to come up to full speed on this. The last thing I wanted to say is, I did do a study before both of you were here of Main Street, and of the eighty-some businesses or ninety-some businesses, there were only seven in the downtown community, and two of those were charitable organizations that wanted, of those, only seven wanted to keep the parking meters. It was overwhelmingly, every business downtown wanted to do away with it. So I'm willing to entertain a motion to postpone it for two weeks for them to come up to speed, but I would also ask that the city managers to suspend enforcement of the parking for the next two weeks anyway until we take action.
Can I?
Mayor Muller. Councilmember McCullough.
And I, I agree with, I mean, I, I agree with the premises that Councilmember Dorn has said, and I also understand that you were pointing out, Mayor Muller, that there's a grievance pending, and I, I also agree that that's probably going to happen, as you've said. My, my greatest concern, though, is not looking at enforcement, when you don't do enforcement anymore, obviously, people are not going to use the meters anymore, which will decrease the revenue, and I do understand why business owners would say, please take the parking meters out, because basically, we maintain the, the lots for them at our cost. I mean, I know they're taxpayers, but in general, citizens of the entire area of Fort Huron would be subsidizing the businesses downtown. I just would like to discuss, and maybe possibly an avenue for the city manager to give us where they might cut back in the budget to, to obtain the necessary funds to maintain those lots, just so we're aware that, I mean, I, I understand, I, I do understand what Councilmember Dorn has said, but I also realize that the revenue would be gone, and we still have to maintain the lots in the snowfalls, so that's my concern.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yeah, I don't want to beat this horse too hard, but we are at an extreme competitive disadvantage, where people can go out to an Applebee's or Red Lobster, and they can park there all day, and they can eat in the restaurants without any fear of this, and I think we're all struggling, the DDA, the Chamber of Commerce, the Community Foundation, actually, everybody is struggling to revitalize downtown. I think this is a philosophical question, more than a financial question. Do we want a downtown that is free and friendly, for people to come and eat, dine, drink, shop, do all the things that they do in typical, typical downtowns, or do we not want that? And many communities have gone this route, and perhaps the city manager could encourage us by reporting the prior, the success stories of some of those other cities that have just completely removed this and opened it up. Also, I do think that, you know, that we, we do have to have the cooperation of our, of our store owners down there, they have to, the building owners, they have to cooperate on this, and, and there's some evidence that not all of them do, and, but, you know, I don't know where Councilman Fisher, they, they must say, you know, the employees, you park in this place, and these business owners have to take this serious if we, if we do in fact go this route.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Stevens.
As you pointed out, we have not seen this study that was done. I would also like a presentation about what this does budgetarily, and I, I do agree we need to look at the amount of money that this offsets on the resurfacing and the paving of those parking lots and the kinds of things that are a problem with that. I think that we, we need to have a little bit more information. The last time that we acted on this type of thing kind of hastily, we had some very bad consequences that occurred to some businesses, and I have talked to some businesses that have said that the same sort of problem would exist again if the meters are completely gone at this time, so could we just, I, you said you would entertain a motion to postpone for two weeks, I'd like to make the motion to postpone for two weeks, and we can then have a presentation, a full presentation of all the ramifications. Thank you.
Would you add the part about directing the city manager?
I, direct.
Otherwise, I won't support it.
Direct the city manager to bring in the information about other cities that have done this successfully.
Postponing the enforcement for two weeks is what.
Oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to postpone the enforcement.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Second?
Support.
So reported by Councilmember Dorn. Discussion on the postponement.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
This is a little off the postpone, but Bruce, do you know of any other cities of our size or bigger that have gotten rid of the parking meters?
What's that?
Do you know, I just guess you can name some city, I don't, so I can look it up, so I can do some research too, I just don't know any cities that, every big city I've ever been to has always had parking meters, so.
Cities that I know that have gotten rid of parking meters in the downtown area particularly would be, on my side of the state at least, are Grand Haven and Holland.
Okay.
Both of those have vibrant, exciting downtown commercial districts. I'm, I'm not sure what role the free parking pa, plays, but it sure plays a part, I'm sure.
Okay.
I can vouch for Grand Haven, spent several hours downtown, not worrying about the parking meter.
I've had a few five-dollar tickets myself here recently, because I'm too, too lazy to get the sticker out of my, out of my glove box here, but I don't want to pay those anymore. I'm all for getting rid of the parking meters, but I just wanted to do a little research. Says the downtown, I didn't know any of the cities I had, taking them out.
Mayor Muller.
Mayor Paul Tim Fisher.
Thank you. Not quite on the postponement, but a few years ago, City Council, in fact, my first non-council was a member then, took a trip to Holland, Michigan, to see what they were doing, how come their downtown was so vibrant, development of things going on. I was at a bit of an advantage because I grew up in Holland, and I still have, my one sister lives there, my mother still lives over there, and one of the key things that they did do was eliminate parking enforcement and the meters, so parking is free, just like right now, if you go up to Fort Grashit, parking is free. At the mall, it's free, at Red Lobster, it's free at my employer, the Home Depot. So it encourages people to come and shop. There are some disadvantages in the downtown area, in fact, I was speaking to one gentleman on a business that he's only got about two parking spaces in front of his building, and he knows that they're going to be taken up by other people, so it's going to be less convenient for people to shop there. Holland uses peer pressure from the other businesses to help enforce their parking. I know my employer, if you ever take a drive in the parking lot, there's a big blue line painted that in summertime, we have to park behind, or bad things happen if you don't do that, let's put it that way, because we're there to serve the customers, and I would hope that any business downtown would realize that, that they're in business to serve anyone who's there to shop. So I would support this, I have no problem with, you know, having this postponed for a couple of weeks and looking at it. We talk about financial impact, the hope is, like Councilmember Dorn said, a philosophical difference in that we can create a more vibrant downtown. You can have, we could charge a hundred dollars an hour for parking down there and have no businesses, but have the potential to really fix all of our city budgetary problems, but that's not going to happen. So at zero per hour, hopefully, we can attract more businesses, have more people investing in more capital, we're going to be collecting more income tax, more personal property tax, I'd like everything taxed too, but, but at this point, I, I think it'd be actually a financial gain for the city, but again, it's, it's a crystal ball thing, there's no, going to be no hard fast numbers for that one.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Marty, would the Chamber of Commerce be willing to do that, like go around with the businesses and try to have them put some pressure on their employees to not park up there, would they be able to take a lead in something like that?
Yes, especially if they were encouraged to do that by council, and I, I think that's where, and I agree with Councilman Fisher, that's where. And, uh, I, I think that's where, and I agree with Councilman Fisher, that's where it has to come from. Uh, we all have to, all of us that own buildings downtown, and I do own a building downtown, we all have to, we have to lease this and monitor this, and the peer pressure has to be there. And I would think that the Chamber of Commerce would be an excellent organization to step into that gap and put that kind of pressure on people. And if it doesn't work, uh, the, the consequences are back where we were.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Byrne.
Uh, I'm okay with delaying it so everybody can get up to speed, if that's what we feel to do. I'm all for moving full speed ahead on this. Uh, one of the biggest comments I heard about the first step we did is we did it backwards. We made the good spots free, we made the further away spots paid still, and so all the employees took the free spots because it was cheaper than paying for a paid spot further away. Uh, sooner we write that, the better. Uh, stopping enforcement for now is a good step. Passing it tonight would be fine with me, but if we want to delay so everyone can get up to speed, that's fine too, but I'm for moving full speed ahead as soon as possible.
Me too, from day one, but part of compromise, I did tell Lani I'd let her get up to speed, and I asked Marty before if he had read the study, he had not, so I.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Dorn.
I think it would also, uh, give time for the Chamber of Commerce and perhaps even the DDA also to just weigh in on this and give councils some, some information that might be helpful too on this over the next couple of weeks.
And I don't know if I have the study from Main Street, but I'm sure they have it, if you wanna get it from them. Any other dis- comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor Muller, the last thing I'd like to say is just that, um, it would also give the people in the community an opportunity to know we're gonna discuss this at the next meeting, and some people that have opinions may not be here now, like the downtown business owners. Maybe they'd come in and share their opinions with us.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, at this time, we're voting on the postponement. Uh, clerk, please take the roll. It was postponed until, go ahead, read it.
Well, postponed until the next meeting and the city manager to stop enforcement for the next two weeks. Is that correct? Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Um.
So do I get to put bags on these meters that says free parking compliments of the interim city manager?
No.
Marty, is the chamber's open house Thursday?
It's thirty first, I believe.
Thirty first, okay. I'll just move this presentation to the next meeting then, if that's okay, so that it's, uh, we can display it.
The thirtieth. Yeah.
Anything for the good of the, um, order at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember, or Mayor Paul Timm Fisher, second?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Stevens, we are adjourned.